Good evening, folks. My name is Dave Hamburger. I just want to welcome you to our Exeter School District Board Workshop Meeting for May. We're here with you again on Zoom Conference and we have our board members in attendance and administration. Some of our administration is joining us as well. Our workshop meeting, obviously, an opportunity for us to to take a look at the agenda for next week. It'll be a voting, voting meeting next Tuesday. So the purpose for those who are new to our workshop meetings, purposes for us to, as a board, to examine and discuss the various items on the, on the board agenda and and have discussion and, and opportunities for questions by our board members and hopefully, you know, with the aid of our administrators who will help us through the various sections of the, of the agenda. So so we get started this evening, I think we, if I'm looking at the agenda correctly, I think the first part of the agenda is let's see, public comments. So I'm going to ask Joe Way or, or IT supervisor, Joe, if you can let us know if we have any, currently have any public comments for the board as we start off here.
Yes, we have one question. It is from John Send you have eighty-nine second more drive. The question is, how do you balance spending approximately $700,000 on refurbishing a track against the number of unemployed and businesses on the verge of bankruptcy and our senior citizens saddled with fixed incomes?
Okay. And I think that was a question that was posed at our most recent budget committee meeting. Hunter, did you say you wanted to respond to that?
Yeah, I can, I can respond to that. You know, this is a question I think that we've been getting a few times now. And I appreciate where it's coming from. You know, it certainly may not make sense to somebody on, on the first look. But really what our intention was is to continue maintaining our facilities. I think all the board members, including myself, believe that we need to have facilities that the community has invested in and that upkeep needs to happen for those facilities. And really what we were looking at with the track is that the track needed to be resurfaced probably by next year. And already we were starting to see some issues that could potentially pose some safety challenges to some of our athletes and then community members who would come in and use the track at their leisure during a football game or something along those lines. So really, the reason that we decided to move that project up is because we had money that was already allocated. This summer will not see a whole lot of use from the track is, is what we anticipate because of the closures related to our facilities from the coronavirus. And because of that, our expectation was that if we had done this project next year, we would impede our ability for community members as well as teams to use that track during the summer next year. And we would also potentially lose out on some revenue that we could expect. And, and that revenue is not a huge piece. So it's not like it was a make or break deal. And that's what's gonna cause a deficit or a surplus for the school district. But it is, it is a significant portion of funds that we, we receive annually. And it's important, I think, that we wanted to protect that revenue stream next year. And that's really why we moved this project up. As to competitive bids and how many bids were proposed or looked at, I know that the school district followed the law in regards to making sure that we had all the quotes that were necessary to go about doing this project. And I think that we did our due diligence on our end. And I think it just again, really comes back to the idea that the board has, I believe, an expectation on it from the community maintainer who made that decision.
And I, I would add too, that, you know, we, we did take a look at all the capital projects. And this was one that we, I think, recognized, had a certain safety element to it. And, and also a pretty significant liability element as well. And so we had to use some criteria in making decisions about which capital projects would go forward in light of, of, of our efforts to try to, you know, really be as careful as we, as we could be about, you know, moving forward with any costs at all. And we recognized that this was ultimately had to be done. And that the timing was correct, I think, as Hunter had pointed out. And there, and because it kind of met that threshold of safety. You know, as it, we moved that into a category, I think that, you know, where we decided to move forward with the, the project. Joe, any other, any other questions from the community at this point or comments?
There are no, there are no additional questions.
Joe, if somebody during the meeting wants to write in a comment or submit a comment, how would they go about doing that? Because I think what we'll do at the end of this meeting toward the end is, is go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can continue.
Joe, I was, I was, I was just going to interject that at the end of the meeting, you know, we'll check again and see if there are any additional questions to come up from the community. Because I think, you know, there, there very well could be issues or questions that come up as a result of our review of the agenda this evening. So I'm sorry, go ahead. How do we go about accessing, folks go about accessing the so many comments?
They can just go to, or they can send an email to webadmin@exetersd.org. W E B A D M I N at E X E T E R S D dot org. I will receive them and then save them for the end. And when you ask at the end, I'll, I'll share them with you at that point.
Okay, great. Thank you, Joe. Before we get into our building program report, I want to thank Dr. Haller for being here to share information about her you know, out in Creek School. I would ask Dr. Phillips, if we have any updates that he wants to share in regard to, you know, where things currently stand with either our instructional programs or any of the planning that we're anticipating for, for next, for the, the next few months and the opening of school.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Well, you will shortly hear in a summary of the curriculum committee meeting that we just had prior to this meeting, the great work that's being done by our teachers, the creativity that they're using to impact the instruction on our students. While that continues, the continuity of education phase continues. The state as well as the districts are now turning an eye toward what would be reopening the schools. I did speak last week on an idea called Back to School 2020 that the state is starting to create, starting to begin. Right now, the Secretary of Education, Pedro Rivera, along with the governor, is reaching out to local, or not local, reaching out to universities and colleges such as Harvard, John Hopkins, and others to gather research on the reopening of our schools. That research will be handed off to a task force that will begin shortly this week, actually, to look at a, a number of areas, instruction, facilities, transportation, and so forth that would impact the opening of our schools. That information will then be processed through our Berks County Intermediate Unit as well as all the other, all the other intermediate units down to the local districts. At that point, we would then work on our own plan. The task force is slated to bring their information on June 5th to the intermediate units. At that point, they will coordinate with local districts to start looking at what the opening of the schools look like. The blueprint for the reentry will be centered on four areas, safety, teaching and learning, equity and access, and student wellness. So what we get from the task force will be boiled down into those four areas. What we're also talking about is how we're making these decisions. We are not governed, if you will, by our local municipalities and county commissioners. We are governed by the, the governor, the General Assembly, and the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So we take our cues from them. At this point, the area we live in, in the state of Pennsylvania is still under red, code red, if you will. There is a decision-making process matrix that I'll be getting out onto the website tomorrow. It'll be on English and Spanish, but it really discusses where we are right now in the code red or the red area. License sustaining businesses only are open. Schools and most childcare facilities are closed. Stay-at-home orders are in place. And then there's a list of other areas that we are currently in right now. If we are moved to the area of yellow, which some of the state is currently in yellow, telework must continue where feasible, businesses when with in-person operations follow business and building safety orders. Childcare will open with worker and building safety orders. And the schools will remain closed for in-person instruction. So we will continue our, as the governor has stated, we will continue our instruction through our graduation, June 5th. Only until we are slated to be green, will all the businesses follow CDC and Pennsylvania Department of Health guidelines as well as schools open. There are a multitude of options being discussed right now as to what it will look like in the fall. But at this point, it'd be really premature to discuss any of those because right now, again, those four areas of safety, teaching, and learning equity and access and student wellness is being driven by the data that we're receiving from not only the governor, but the Secretary of Health. Does anybody have any questions at this point? Or that would be, that would be the point where we're at right now. I will have this out on our website tomorrow. If anyone looks, wants to look at it a little closer, it's about a one-page, two-page document.
Dr. Phillips, did you get any insight into whether there would be any additional funding for any of the modifications that would have to be made for, you know, opening school with this transportation or food services or, you know, materials, you know, equipment?
Those discussions are ongoing. There is a CARES Act that was put in place. We are looking at that to be supplemental to the, to the budget from the government, the governor, not a supplanting. That will give us additional funding, but it would only recoup some of the, the costs that we've already incurred. There is discussions down in Harrisburg about an opportunity to fund some additional instruction over the summer. That's one thing we're looking at. As well as the discussions, and I'm sure the task force will be discussing this. What will school look like in the fall? It will certainly be different. And it will certainly entail more cost. And how will that be funded through the government? At this point, though, we have no specifics.
And the CARES Act provides, what did I hear, $31 billion to public education?
Yeah, and you're on the call. I think we're getting about 350,000. Is that correct?
That 355,000 is our allocation, but you'll see in my presentation, I'll make some points about that. I'm taking it out of the budget right now until we have some guidance because as Dr. Phillips indicated, if those funds are required to use for things such as the reopening, a new cost, we have to have an expenditure number to put in the budget. And right now, there's just too much uncertainty, but I'll address that later.
And I think Ann's point is, is well taken. There is so much uncertainty right now. I mean, the things change on a daily basis. I hear things one day and the next meeting I'm on, I hear something totally different. This morning I was on with some universities, they're in the same boat. They really don't know what's going to happen this year, how that's going to work. So we're all sort of grappling with the idea of planning without really knowing what we're planning for. But those plans are taking place. The real, the real eye-opener is going to be the June 5th task force information. That will really, you know, put a, a structure to what the planning will take place. And I think at that point, we'll be able to come up with much more sturdier plans.
I was on a call, I was on a call today with Pennsylvania School Board Association. Yeah, I, I do. I was on, I was on a call today, Dr. Phillips with PSBA. And the, the question came up about summer meals for kids. We're still, my understanding is we're still delivering meals and making those available to students or families. What's the plan for over the summer? If any, I, my understanding was it might be optional for school districts. And I wondered what our plan was.
We, we have a summer lunch program, correct, Ann? That we've been doing?
We are operating as if it was a summer lunch program, but we will stop serving last student day.
So that's something we need to discuss on how we're going to continue to support our, our students.
Because I think my understanding is there is some, some subsidy for that, that, that may be available. I don't know whether it covers the cost of the food, but
My idea would be to continue to do it.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Phillips. Any other questions? If not, I think we can move on in our agenda. And we have, as I mentioned previously, Dr. Kristi Haller, our principal at a Watt Creek Elementary School for her elementary report. So I'll turn it over to you, Kristy.
Thank you for having me. I'm excited to talk about what we're doing at a Watt and Creek. I broke the, my, my presentation into several categories where I talk about instruction and professional development with happening. Some of the challenges that we're seeing with online attendance, what we're doing to reach out to engage our families. And then lastly, some of the challenges that we faced as we've started this whole new way of, of learning. And so my very first line that I wrote in my board report was shift happens. We never thought that we would be here at this point. We were planning for PSSAs, what the end of the year was going to look like. And then through comprehensive planning, what we were going to be doing for the following year. And um, now that's, that's all changed. So what we have been focusing on is a good amount of professional development. We have completely shifted our focus as to our approach to instruction. All of our teachers are using Schoology as a platform. And a big thank you to our tech department for helping us get online, getting out devices to our students. And in our instructional coaches for all the professional development that they've been doing. Right around the time that we started this, one of our former students, Rose Kirchner, who I had the pleasure of being her assistant principal at Refton, wrote an article about Carol Moyer, and she highlighted what instruction looks like right now in this, this COVID-19 crisis. And I have a link to that article that Rose wrote. As far as student attendance, we're about 98%. It's something that we are continuing to work on. We do have, we are down to three students at this point who have not logged on at all. Two of our, the students do have school district issued devices. So we have been reaching out to them to try and get families engaged. We have been making phone calls. We've personally dropped off devices. We've had to use language line. We've had to refer students to ESAP. So we are getting our ESAP coordinator, Alicia Leonard, involved. We've been having meetings with her. And I feel as confident that we will be able to engage more of our families. My concern, as well as the concern of some of my colleagues, is that once we go back to school, once parents start to go back to work, that engagement's going to start to look less because it's going to be a struggle for parents to try and help their students online as well as try and manage going to work, especially with, you know, perhaps childcare. We have been using social media as a way to engage our families, particularly through messages for Parent Link and Facebook. And Matt Hathaway, who you all know, is very visionary. And when I came to a Watt and in the fall, we talked about creating our own type of tagline for a Watt and Creek. And he came up with a Watt and Creek, our community for the L and the C. And we were going to launch that in the fall, but given what was happening, we decided to launch it this year. So we have been trying to reach out to our families daily. We feature teachers, we feature student work. Carol Moyer shared in our curriculum meeting what she's doing periodically for students. Students pictures of things and how they're engaging. And um, any type of highlights that we can get up there so we can continue to engage our families and show them what the teachers are doing and celebrate our students' accomplishments. And a couple of weeks ago, we had a student send us a video where he's actually instructing other people how to, to do a drawing. He created it on YouTube. He sent it in. We had parent permission and we posted it. We did a school video, which I will show a couple of minutes at the end of my presentation, if time allows. And, you know, I want to highlight Diana Bogus, who was our PE teacher. He did the turkey trot in the fall, which is something that I talked about. And her work is actually being featured in Momentum Magazine, which is a publication for physical education teachers. So even though we're not physically in school, we're still trying to do as many fun things and engaging things as well as continue with instruction. So our challenges, it was very fast. We had to move very fast, make adjustments very fast. Our teachers are learning. Our parents are learning, our students are learning. We are trying to gauge how much work we're giving students so that way people aren't feeling overwhelmed. And that's definitely been a learning curve for all of us. For the teachers, parent feedback has been important as we make adjustments. And I have to say, our Watt and Creek parents, and I know the other principals feel this way as well. You know, they're amazing. I, I, I know what it's like right now for me to be working at home with kids and trying to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Some of our families have multiple children that are trying to do this as well as work. And they're doing an excellent job. They've been amazing. They've been supportive. And we feel very fortunate to have such a strong partnership with, with our families. As educators, we're concerned about the impact this is going to have on our students. Services that perhaps they would have seen had on a regular basis, such as progressions. We're trying to do that remotely, but sometimes it's difficult for some of our parents to be getting online to do that, as well as some other obligations that they have. We have students that are sharing devices. Because, you know, they, they might have two, but there's three kids and they're trying to be cognizant of how to manage that. So that's definitely a challenge. And just the concern of what it's going to look like next year with the COVID-19, us being out of school in March, coupled with the fact that we have typical summer slide. How are we going to recoup that time? And what, you know, as Dr. Phillips said, it's not going to look the same when we go back in the fall. And what's that going to look like? How are we going to manage that with our students? Especially our little, our kindergartners who haven't had the experience with school before. And now we have them coming in and wearing masks. And some of them are struggling to remember to blow their nose, you know, so it's all real, real conversations that the teachers are having. They have great thoughts, great ideas. And we've been asking them, you know, for ideas, what this could look like. As far as kindergarten is going to look very different than it is going to be for our fourth graders. So those are just some highlights that are happening at a lot in Creek. And I'm not sure if anybody has any questions that I can certainly do my best to answer for you.
I do, Dr. Haller. The first thing I just wanted to say is my kids go to Watt. And so I've heard nothing but amazing things about you from the staff to the parents to the students. So I know I'm personally thankful that you're at a Watt and Creek. So I've heard good things. So good job on that. My question for you is, you know, we've been talking a lot about the budget and I definitely have some reservations about cutting AIDS, in particular, the reading aids. And I know that since a Watt and Creek doesn't get Title I funding, that they are one of the schools that will be probably affected the most. So I just wondered that if you could tell us as a principal, how you feel like this will affect learning for the students by cutting out these aids, or if there's any other thoughts that you may have on this topic.
So there's been a lot of conversation about the need to make reductions and cuts with the budget. And certainly, everyone is completely understanding of that. We, we've had, we've looked at our, the aid situation. And while all of our aides play an important role, our reading aids are really essential to reading intervention in our building. So while, you know, I, I would ask that if anything could be reconsidered, I would simply ask that the eight reading aids be reconsidered. Only because of what they do. I'm not lessening the importance of what our instructional aids do. They're, they're very important. They're all wonderful people and they're dedicated to the students. However, the role of the reading aid is, is different and their training is different. And we depend on them to provide intervention for some of our students who are in tier two. And without having additional staff, meaning an additional reading specialist or intervention specialist, it would be very difficult to make sure that their students receive that reading intervention. And they have been trained in those protocols, the programs that we do use. So that's, that's my thought about the reading aids. And it is something that would greatly impact a lot in Creek, more so because we are not a Title I school.
Dr. Hall, I just had a question about the use of the reading aids. Do they, are they deployed to, to, to provide the, the primary direct instruction for some kids as a regular teacher would? Have they been given that, that responsibility?
Now, so the way that the reading and the reading aids work is we meet about student data. And we identify students that need reading intervention. So the teach, the classroom teacher for our struggling students, they need to be seeing the students every day. And then they get a second dose of reading intervention specific by the reading, the reading aids. Ideally, it would be great if we had certified teachers in those roles. However, that's not always available. At a Watt and Creek, we do have one certified teacher who was a former kindergarten teacher. The programs that our reading aids are using are programs that are, they're flying start. At Lorraine, when I was there, they were, one was using LLI. Sometimes they give a second dip of foundations, which is a phonics program. And again, it's all things that they've been trained to do, but they're not the primary source of instruction. They're just, it's, it's an intervention.
So, I mean, to simplify it, it might be just like an additional dose of reading instruction in the course of the day for those kids who are not reading, not meeting benchmark and need additional support.
That's correct. And the way that we've structured it over the years and we've refined that process is, you know, we're very cautious about making sure that we're providing students with the correct support. We don't want to pull them out of the regular classroom. Just because. So anytime that we can provide what they need inside that classroom, tier one instruction needs to be solid. And then we're very careful about the students that are going to need that additional support. And it's, it's very program specific.
Thank you.
Sorry, Dr. Hill, I have a question for you. Now that the kindergartners and the first graders now have Chromebooks, do you see that being a part of the curriculum from now on with those particular devices?
So I don't think anyone could have imagined that we would be at this place. And I don't, I don't know that I have a strong opinion one way or another about being one-to-one. I definitely see that there's benefits for our older students. But for our younger students, sometimes we question how much we want them to be on devices. Having faced this situation, you know, perhaps this is something that we need to be looking at. The devices are used heavily in the classroom, more so at the K one level. They prefer to use the iPads. But we saw with Schoology, the iPads were not the best device to use in this particular situation. I do think that, and I put this in my report, I do think that this blip in time is going to very much change the way we look at instruction, the way that we approach instruction. And I don't see there being a need for snow days anymore. But if we don't have snow days, we're going to need a way for kids to access school. And they're most likely going to need devices for it. And perhaps Joe, and I don't want to put him on the spot, Joe Way can speak better to how many devices were actually given out. But if parents are working from home and even if they have a device, students are still going to be, need to access something. And we're finding that with families with multiple students, even though the district did provide a device, sometimes even two. And we're finding that with families with multiple students, even though the district did provide a device, sometimes even two. It's, they really need to have their own. So it is something to be, I think, thoughtful of and is, you know, as this progresses and, you know, whatever may happen from this.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a, first of all, Dr. Hall, thank you for your report and for what you and all your teachers are doing. I'm really impressed as we saw in the curriculum meeting with some of the teachers are doing. I'm also impressed with, you said there's 98% of the students are logging on, and I saw on your report you have only four students who have not logged on, and that's really impressive because
We're down to three.
Okay, great. So, I mean, there's school districts that have way lower percentages than that. But are you, and you're making a lot, there's a lot of effort made to reach the students. Are you not hearing back from those three students' parents or, and I was curious what grade they are?
So we, it's three students, they're primary students. One student, we're, I'm working closely with some of the other staff members to try and get support because there is, there's a language issue. And so I feel as though it's, you know, important that we do whatever we can to reach out to this particular family. So we've used Language Line. Now we're actually having one of our other teachers who speaks Spanish call because we don't want that to be a barrier to their child being able to engage. I talked to Joe to see about, you know, they said they had a device, but we're not sure if it's working. It does take a lot of time to reach out to the families, but it's it's important. One of the other families, I I actually brought the device to their home because they needed a device and couldn't get get it. I'm not sure why. They're still not logging on. I've reached out, some of the other teachers, the other teachers are reaching out, and now they're not accepting our calls. The third family, they have shared that because of work schedules. It's basically impossible for them to log on, but nonetheless, you know, it's still important that this child log on, and so we continue to reach out every day to this family to see, you know, if there's a way that we can assist and support and and help them. So we're we're willing to do whatever we can to engage engage these children. But again, I I get it. It's a it's a struggle for some of the parents. It's it's challenging to manage. And it's just amazing how well parents have done thus far with us.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Dr. Haller, last December, at your, I think it was your last report, and it was my first board meeting, I asked you if there was an issue that kept you up at night, and without hesitating a beat, said it was mental health. I'm wondering now, six months later, in the midst of this pandemic, what what is happening with that issue, at least at your school? I know you can't speak for the whole district. But I can't imagine that the students who needed mental health support in December are needing any less support now. So can you talk about how you at a Watten Creek are addressing the mental health needs of our students?
Sure. So when this first started, we, because this was kind of gray territory, our school counselors were meeting with students individually because we were concerned about them meeting in a group. Now they're able to meet with students in a group again. We run a student services team, and so we already had students that we've been monitoring over the course of the year, and so those students have become, still are our priority. So the student services team, which includes myself, have been reaching out to families to check on students, make sure that they have what they need. We've been in touch with our Progressions counselor, Amy Keith. She is still running sessions with some of our students who accepted that help, so we have been monitoring it that way as well. Alicia Leonard, I can, I cannot speak enough about her. She is amazing at what she does. She has been called in by all the administrators at various times to assist with students that there's been concerns and that families have reached out and and needed help. And and our families have been very honest and and forthcoming when they needed support, and we appreciate that. The issue with being out of the building and not having eyes on the on the students is what's happening that we don't see. This is, what's going on right now has added another layer of what is already a stressful existence for some families. It's added additional burden with the financial impact, having kids at home, trying to manage all that. So our concern is we don't see the kids, and so we don't know exactly what's happening because they they might not be able to report that to us. So what we can control is offering options for kids to have that face-to-face time with a teacher. And all the teachers at a Watten have weekly meetings with the students. And I think that has been helpful just to kind of keep up their spirits. And but it's it's still a very great concern and and more so now than ever before because we're not, we're not seeing the children every day.
Right. To Dr. Winters and Dr. Phillips, is there a a system-wide or district-wide plan to address this issue, some of the points that Dr. Haller made? I have to assume that that these issues are occurring at all of our schools. Could we maybe get a report on that? A district-wide report on how we're addressing the mental health needs of our kids during this time?
Every building is doing it similarly to Dr. Howard, so we can certainly get that for you, sure. Plus, we have our social worker, Ashley Reiner, so yes, we can get that for you.
Okay, and maybe we can have a, that could be part of the discussion next Tuesday?
Sure, I can try and get that, yep.
Great, thank you.
If there are no further questions, we're going to say thank you, Dr. Haller, excellent presentation. And again, I have to echo what Dr. McLendon, her comments. I mean, it's it's been really impressive to see not only our teachers stepping up, but I think our administrators and the and the scrambling and the work and the flexibility and the patience and and the care and commitment to, you know, stepping in and and dealing with the situation in a really unprecedented time. So thank you for
Thank you. I I'd just like to say, I I'm I'm fortunate to be part of a great administrative team, and everyone is supporting each other and bouncing ideas off of each other. And I I think that's why that works, because we're, we are creating something from scratch.
Yeah, we really are. We'll keep up the, keep up the great work. And, you know, the, and it's always helps us, I think, to tax, to see some of the examples. So what we saw curriculum committee this evening was really really helpful to kind of bring it in into much more you know, front and center in terms of what's being done. We're going to move on to our, the next portion of our agenda, which is a budget update from Mrs. Gaidish. So, Anne, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Joe, are you going to, do you want me to bring that up? Okay. This evening, we are going to review food service, capital projects, and general fund budgets for 2020, 2021. Next Tuesday, the school board will adopt proposed final budgets for these funds. Next slide, Joe. This slide is food service. It is the same as what we looked at on April 21st. It does not reflect any meal price increase at this point. That will take place in June. But currently, for next year, we are looking at a break-even scenario before a price increase. This year, we were hoping to break even, but due to things that have happened, a loss of about $90,000. And as I mentioned in the last presentation on food service, the very bottom, it shows negative net assets, and that's because the Food Service Fund is proprietary. And we have to record pension liability and other post-employment benefits on the statements. But if you would take out those entries, the fund balance at the end of last year was around $470,000. Fund balance for the end of next year, based on a break-even, and the loss this year will be about $382,000. Next slide. Capital project funds, this is a combination of capital reserve and other funds where new money was issued in 2014 and 2019. The current year has been adjusted to reflect the Senior High Track project, which will come out of capital project funds. So the total expense for this year will be about $2.5 million. Revenue of about $150,000 will end the year with $7.5 million in capital project funds. Next year, we will incur capital expenditures for the Lorraine and Jacksonwald Unit Ventilator Project, which is currently underway. That is replacing the heating-cooling units in the, in the, in the classrooms. We have a couple of other smaller projects which we're still evaluating. Playground equipment at Jacksonwald and carpet replacement at Lorraine. And we will be reporting back soon whether they will take place or not. We did remove some other projects, painting at Senior High School in Lorraine, as well as replacing the wall mats. The Senior High School gym will defer those until a future year. So at the end of next year, June 30, 2021, the capital reserve balance will be down to $4 million. Next slide. I'd first like to give a brief update on current year fund estimate. Revised some expenditures, if you recall, in April, I reduced expense based upon the closure. In speaking with special education, there are some services that are continuing, such as OTPT and speech. So I'm adding back to the estimate $51,000. In addition, we do have a licensing renewal coming up at the end of this year, which I had taken out, but adding back $25,000 to that. So the revenue less expense or excessive expense over revenue, $622,000 for the end of this fiscal year. Next slide. I'd like to make a few comments about the state budget. It looks like the timeline will be stretching into the early part of June. We're not sure whether it's going to be a 12-month budget or five-month, seven-month budget. Obviously, the state's having revenue challenges, and it's very complex in trying to fit in the federal stimulus funds, and we really don't know what the state is going to do at this point. There also are no assurances about the level of education funding for 2020, 2021. There are some bills out there for property tax freeze. Neither have moved beyond the initial steps. House Bill 2640 is for taxpayer flexibility. This bill would extend the property tax discount period by 30 days, and it would also eliminate the penalty through December 31, 2020. So we just really need to stay tuned to see what happens with those bills. Next slide. CARES funding, Exeter's allocation is $356,000 approximately. And this 12 eligible uses, it does address things such as purchasing supplies to sanitize, providing principals and school leaders with necessary resources, providing mental health services and supports. What's really not clear at this point is are these additional services that need to be provided, additional expenses? Or can we use any of these funds to supplant or cover the cost that we currently have in our budget? Next slide. Recent communication from Jay Himes of the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials is that what's not apparent is to the extent that the new federal funding may be offset by reductions in state funding. In other words, they may use the funds to backfill basic education funding, similar to what happened with the ARF funds back about 10 years ago. So his advice and PASBO's advice, at a minimum, at this point, do not put all the new federal dollars in next year's budget as new money. They believe it's, at least some of those new federal dollars, hopefully not all, will be offset by reductions in existing state funding. Next slide. So basically, we need to have further guidance on the CARES funding, you know, can we use it to relieve our current fiscal burden? For example, some of the 12 uses are very broad. Any activity authorized by ESEA, other activities that are necessary to maintain the operation of and continuity of services. So basically, we need to confirm if we do have options to recover from 1920 and use the funds in the proposed 2021 budget without increasing expenditures to spend these funds. You know, increasing the expenses and increasing revenue, there's really no relief for the budget or taxpayers. Next slide. In April, I had provided some reductions in local sources based upon information that I was aware of, looking back to 2008 through 2010, and what was the trend in revenue resulting from the Great Recession. PASBO has provided a few different scenarios, and maybe some of you had seen the article in the Reading Eagle on May 3rd regarding assumptions for Berks County School Districts. I provided two different assumptions. Worst case, and then one with not as dire reductions. So the first column on the left with with figures really reflects what I had included on 4/21, April 21st, in the presentation. The next two columns are PASBO's, their assumptions. They, they are property tax collection rate, I was using 96.65%. They took in another, a different approach, but it really reduces property tax collection by a very significant, significant amount. And I'm not sure that's actually going to happen, and so what I've done was adjusted it down further to reflect a 96.2% collection rate, which is the lowest that this district occurred in, during the recessionary period. I also made an adjustment to earned income tax, reducing it by another $200,000 to bring it to a 12% reduction. Again, back in 2009, 10, we really only experienced about a 3.5% reduction year to year. And my initial estimate was at 7%, but Berks CIT, they were averaging 12%, so I am reducing that further. I'm not making any changes to transfer tax. I believe the adjustment I've made is adequate compared to PASBO's assumption two. Not every school district has this privilege, so that's not applicable here. Investment income, I'm keeping it at the same at this point, according to what I initially reduced it by. Delinquent taxes, your perspective, PASBO's perspective is a little different than mine. And it's really based on the fact that even though we may turn over more taxes on collected taxes, the rate of collection will be spread out over a longer period of time, so I reduced that by $200,000. So what I've, I've adjusted the budget for local revenue downward by an additional $615,000. So when I compare to PASBO's assumption number two, which is about $2.7 million to what I've used, $2.1, there's a variance of about $600,000, and as you'll see later, I'm adding that in as an assignment of fund balance in the event that things play out according to, you know, the scenarios that, you know, PASBO has presented for the Exeter Township School District. Next slide. According to, you know, the scenarios that, you know, Paspo has presented for the Exeter Township School District. Next slide. Again, this just illustrates our lowest point was ninety six point two percent collection rate in two thousand nine. Next slide. So I'm removing temporarily removing the CARES Act funding from next year's federal funding. Of three hundred fifty five thousand, but I'm reverting back, excuse the typo there. To the twenty twenty one basic education and special ed funding included in the governor's original budget proposal. So I added back in one hundred seventy one. Basically, I'm reversing what I did on four twenty one. Based on the guidance about the CARES funding, the uncertainty about the CARES funding. So net impact is reducing revenue by a further amount of one hundred eighty five thousand. Next slide. In summary, for twenty twenty one revenue. After the adjustments that I just summarized, seventy five million before any tax increase. You can see local sources, the change from what we looked at in March is about one point nine million. Reduction in state sources has to do with the reduction in social security and retirement related to. The staffing reductions which are reflected on the expense side. Next slide. I I do want to point out that in board docs, there is the attachment, the full attachment on the results of the RFP for. Refunding three issues, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen A and two thousand fifteen B. We received very favorable proposal from JP Morgan Chase of one point zero four percent. Column in blue reflects the savings that we will take over time in twenty twenty one. It's about four hundred seventy thousand. Which I will be reflect, it's reflected in the on the expense side, we'll see that later. The column in red is a refunding that will take place in the summertime and really nothing has been done with that. So that's not. Reflected in the budget, that's just an estimate provided by PFM. So. The what we've done with JP Morgan, we've accepted their proposal. Over the life of this bond refunding, it's a savings of about one point two five million, which will help the budget. You know, going forward. Next slide. I made some changes to the next year's general fund expense budget. As I mentioned, the refinancing savings of four hundred seventy thousand in principal interest. And we continue to review all aspects of the budget. Because sometimes things have to be revised, things get missed. In terms of our supported cyber school, we contract for staffing for the supported cyber program. That was not entered into the budget. And. So I recently received that information from special education. In addition, we are estimating that we will need more. VLN programming cost, what was budgeted was a hundred and twelve thousand. And there's a potential of needing approximately a hundred seventy five thousand to support the current. Supported cyber program in the Laurel Life classroom. It's my understanding that we're gradually going to be moving away from VLN. But there are students that will finish out in that program. And again, wage related budget reductions, I reflected. When we reviewed our budget reduction plan, they were net of. Reimbursement for Peasars and social security. So I've really reflected it at gross cost. Next slide.
Hey, Anne.
Yeah.
Could I jump in here really quick? Would you, would you be able to go back to the previous slide? Related to the contracted staffing for SCS supported cyber school, can you just kind of elaborate a little bit on what the origin of that is?
Well, it started with. The current year nineteen twenty. When we used to, prior year had Manitow operating out of our. Administration building and the staff that were working with the Manitow program were also able to assist in. Our supported cyber program, but that closed. So we did not. It was decided by people services. And it was approved for this year's budget that we would contract staffing. For the supported cyber school. And it was not entered when people services developed their budget for twenty twenty one. Recently, we got the proposals for next year and this is the amount that needs to be added into the budget.
Okay, I I mean, as a general note. You know, I think we've had a lot of increase in the pupil services budget area for contracted services and I. I may be incorrectly remembering this, but I think that we were already looking at something like a thirteen percent jump this year. So this is in addition to that.
Correct. And this. Service contracted service, you know, they monitor. Assist, you know, twenty plus students that are attending either on a morning or an afternoon basis. I'm not sure if Dr. Winters or Dr. Phillips wants to add anything, but. That's part of the the contract.
Yeah, the supported cyber program, when it was originally designed. These were students at the high school that in addition to wanting to do work online. They also had some other challenges that made coming to the traditional brick and mortar setting. A challenge for them. Maybe it was issues of mental health, issues of anxiety. Typically, those were the two biggest. Sometimes it was bullying related issues, but. They had very specific reasons why they couldn't be successful at the high school in a full day model. And so as as Mrs. Guidish mentioned, when we had Manitow, those individuals helped support. And as part of the supported cyber model, the some of what those contracted folks do is they provide mental health support. For those students, as many of our students that are in supported cyber need that piece. And with our half schedule, where some of them come in the first half of the day and some in the latter half of the day. That that works out well for those students. What what we have decided is that since our total number of students in supported cyber. Continues to go down a little bit each year, that since the VLN product, virtual learning network, since their virtual content. Is what these high school students started their supported cyber program using. We strategically decided to allow them to finish using that product until they completed it. But then if we had any new students that were stepping into supported cyber, they would use Edge Newity, which is the same product that we use in the high school for the. Traditional virtual academy so that we have consistency of product.
And and maybe maybe I'm mixing pots here, but. Is it our intention that over time, you know, these two costs here as well as others are going to begin to decrease because of our own. Programming that we're going to develop with our secondary teachers for our own virtual program? Is that correct?
That would be true for the for that eighty seven thousand eight hundred figure. Because as our own virtual academy continues to expand and develop. We would look to just have one virtual academy that meets the needs of kids using our teachers. The. The the part that is a little bit more of a wild card is that second figure. Because if we if we continue to run the Laurel Life classroom. In our buildings, we're going to need content for the students that are in that classroom and and, you know, we'll need to determine. You know what what the best content is for them. Ideally, I would love it if we can get online content built in such a way that it would even work for our students in Laurel Life as well. Having more and more content built by our own folks and relying less and less on third party vendors, I think is absolutely the way to go. Also, as we've been discussing this here, Ms. Broadhead did send me a text and that eighty seven thousand eight hundred figure. That cost is for one point five. Staff members from Folium, which is the company that provides the contracted staffing. So that's what that figure equates to. It's one and a half staff positions.
So generally speaking, as we're able to produce more of our own content. These contracted services for students who are being educated outside of more. I'll say traditional model. Will start to decrease across the board. Is that a is that a fair generalization?
Yes, that is a fair statement.
Yeah, how many? Sorry, go ahead, Dave.
No, the only thing I was going to point out was that. If these students were, let's say, enrolled in a cyber charter school instead of a. Instead of a contracted service through the through the school district, our our student cost would be closer to twenty five thousand. Per student because they probably have special needs that would need to be accommodated, would be identified as students with IEPs and and. That would cost us, you know, comparably, it would cost us five hundred thousand dollars then to 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 educate these kids as opposed to the eighty seven thousand eight hundred that is listed here. So. I mean, I think it's important that we continue to support, you know, you know, this option because by far of all the. Of all the cyber charter or all the cyber options that we have, this is the this is a far more economical. And probably more, probably as good, if not better, in terms of an instructional option.
Better than the cyber charters with additional opportunity moving forward to make it even stronger.
I'm good, I'm sorry.
Next slide. This slide is a summary of expenditures by major object. Four columns in the center which. A lighter beige color really summarize. Expenses from that we looked at on April of about eighty million, eighty point seven million. The budget reductions, one point four, that number is slightly different. It's a little higher because again, I reflected. Gross, social security and retirement versus, you know, net. My budget reduction presentations were all on a net basis. The next column over summarizes what I just spoke about. The savings in principal and interest and then the additional contracted service cost. So at this point. The expenditure number is seven seventy eight million nine hundred eighty two thousand two hundred. Or an increase of about two point four million from the estimate. For this year, the COVID estimate or three point one percent. Next slide. Is a summary of revenue expense and fund balance. The blue column to the left reflects new tax increase or deficit of. Three million eight hundred fifty three thousand. So last presentation, we're looking at a deficit of about three point four million. Now we're up to close to three point nine million. Basically, it's a reduction in local revenue of six hundred fifteen thousand, state and federal of one hundred eighty five thousand. And reducing expense by three hundred twenty thousand, which brings us to around three point. Eight, three point nine million. The column to the right in green reflects the Act One index, a three point three percent limit in tax increase. And again, with the changes in the budget. We would still fall within the eight percent limit of unassigned. Fund balance as a percentage of expenditures has to be below eight percent. The next column. Add a one percent tax increase. The unassigned fund balance would be five point one percent. The deficit would be three point four million. The final column, a two percent tax increase, the deficit would be two point nine million approximately. And the unassigned fund balance would be six point two percent. I I do want to mention that, you know, there's so much uncertainty regarding COVID nineteen and what's going to happen. During the summer and the return to school, but we may end up passing a budget as is. And then have to react to the expense changes as we go through next year because. What's included in the budget for next year is as if we were going to return. But as you know, there's, as I said, so much uncertainty, so we'll have to deal with it as as it comes.
Anne, could I just ask you quickly to give a broad. Summary of what the difference between our fund balance components are. Ie, what what is in that commitments portion of the fund balance and what is in that net assignments portion of the fund balance? And then could you also address whether those funds could be used to cover any type of deficit that we would have this year?
Joe, would you go down to slide eighteen? The other direction eighteen. The commitments column to the far right. Shows an amount. By board resolution for Peasars increases in the contribution rate. This was approved several years ago and we as. We incur increases in our employer contribution expense, we reduce this commitment. So it'll be four hundred and seventy thousand for twenty twenty one. Assessment appeals. That we've been experiencing every year for the last ten years or more. Eighty five thousand. And the final portion of the commitments is capital improvements. As we use those funds for smaller capital projects paid for out of the general fund, that's one point two six nine or. The committed balance is one million eight hundred twenty four thousand eight twenty one. And again, they are in the description there amounts constrained to be used for a specific purpose. And obviously, the school board adopts this by resolution that happens in June. And it also could be removed or changed by an equal level action. Next slide is the assignments. And. The assignments with no tax increase really relates to the first one, a future year budget deficit. You know, we looked at the five year projection and. You know, with no tax increase, we could be experience a deficit and this is a legitimate use of or an assignment. It's a future fiscal use of the fund balance pension obligation. We had added that. A couple of years ago because we continue to see increases and now. Based on what has happened with the market and returns, will our rates continue to go up? Higher than what was projected back in December. Local revenue shortfall, I mentioned that earlier, if our exposure is what Paspo is showing it may be. And we need to make an assignment of fund balance. Contract wage and benefit increases over the future, we're negotiating contracts. What if we go back, what if we do a Chromebook one to one for. The low grades lower than grade four, that would be the additional cost. Technology equipment replacements, five hundred twenty six, five hundred twenty six thousand, that's what we took out of the twenty twenty one budget, but. They will have to be done. So it's a future use of fund balance. Will be incurring a social study and science license renewal, that was for a six year period, that will be coming up. We need to replace bus radios, dead service. We're realizing four hundred seventy thousand for twenty twenty one, but the following year it will be much lower. So. That's a one time, so it. So that's a one time. So this will be a use of, of fund balance going forward. So that, those are the assignments.
So if I can just maybe. I, I don't know if, if you feel comfortable positing on this. At all, but for the commitments, I didn't really see any room in there for us to. As a, as a wise decision, really adjust any of those commitments. But in this net assignments, it seems that there is more. Maneuverability, maybe is a good word to use for especially this future year budget deficit category. That we could lean into with the size of a deficit we're looking at. Would you say that that's, that's a. A legitimate position? I, I know I'm asking a lot from you, but.
No, you're not. The, these are things that management needs to point out to the school board that. There are. If we don't consistently raise taxes at some level, we will, or reduce expenses. At a significant level going forward, there will be deficits and this is. Pointing out that we will be using up that fund balance. Now, to your point about can you reduce that, you'd basically be pushing it down into the unassigned fund balance. And if you do that, then you will restrict your ability to. Raise taxes by any amount.
So when, when you say that restricts our ability to raise taxes by any amount, can you, I, I guess I'm not.
An amount.
Okay.
So if we would go back up to. Slide. Sixteen. And if we would look at the green column and if we were to move. The portion of the net assignment of eight point two. Down into unassigned. These are all different because the deficit will be different because of a tax increase. You have to modify that because if you have tax increases, that impacts your future years. But if you would move any of those assignments down into the unassigned. Then you would bump up the seven point seven percent above eight percent, then you would not be able. To even look at a scenario of raising to the index. And the same would follow with the one percent or the two percent. It, it comes down to, well, how much do you really want to? How much do you want to ignore future use of fund balance and, and? Put more down into unassigned fund balance. That's the whole point of assignments. That's a future use of fund balance. But if you don't agree with some of those, then.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that, that's, that's a helpful explanation and I think factoring that into. The five year projections that the administration has provided. Also add some of the context around maybe the size of, of some of those net assignments. I'm, I'm considering at this point and maybe this is a better discussion once we get later in the agenda, but considering the use of some of that. Well, let me, let me ask you this question instead, and I, I, I don't mean to dominate other people's time. Well, our bond rating, when, when we're, we're rated by the agent or the rating agencies. Are they looking at our unassigned fund balance to that eight percent threshold as a. Indicator of our. Health, do they look at it holistically with our, with our fund balance components? I, I guess what I'm really asking is, is there a scenario where? These drop to a certain point and the rating agencies look at us and say, the district is no longer in a healthier position. And I also recognize that it's very difficult to answer that question because we don't know how they're going to react as a whole to the recession right now. So I don't, I don't know if you can maybe elaborate on that at all.
The rating agencies look at your financial stability and if. The district gets into a position of deficit spending and not. Taking whatever steps are necessary, whether it's tax increases or reducing expenses. And not addressing the future, planning for the future, both in general operations and in capital. That's when they would start to question the stability.
Okay.
It was all about planning.
Yeah, and it's my chipino. What is our current, who are we rated by and what is our current rating?
Standard and poor's and it's stable double A.
So it currently is a double A. We're pretty much considered a very low credit risk at this point.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
I'm, I'm good, Anne. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, Joe, could you go back up or go to seventeen? Next slide. This is the, the millage impact of the. If the board were even to consider a millage increase of one percent. And this just reflects residential properties in our district, average assessment of a hundred eight thousand. It would cost annually one percent increase in millage, thirty five dollars and eighty six cents. A one percent increase in millage would give additional revenue of four hundred sixty thousand. I'm in the middle of the slide, middle section, the two percent. Property average of a hundred eight thousand, assessed value seventy one dollars and seventy three cents, three point three to the index. A hundred eighteen thousand, excuse me, a hundred eighteen dollars and thirty five cents per year. This just provides you with. Village impact scenarios. At the bottom section gives a five year average in increases. One point two percent, two years, two of the years of the past five years, there was no tax increase. So. Go to slide twenty. So our next step will be to. Next week I'll have the budget on the state forum, PDE twenty twenty eight and that it will be put on display. But it should reflect either a zero tax increase or it should reflect what the school property tax rate will be. So I need some feedback. From the school board this evening on what to present. It's. And again, it, it, millage is not set until June twenty third. It's just, we need to have something. On display. So I need guidance from the school board. We'll be adopting a very basic resolution. That's on the next slide. I'll continue to provide updates on the CARES funding and again, we'll. Continue to review our estimates and our next year projections. We'll wait to hear about House Bill twenty six forty about taxpayer relief. I've had recent discussions with our tax collector regarding how are we going to manage tax collections and keeping social distancing. Currently, I think they have a Dropbox, but we have to discuss the issue of. Required sitting times, but it sounds like the Dropbox really worked well with the collection of township taxes. And also be calculating the homestead farmstead exclusion amount, which that resolution will be included in June. We will get an allocation, all school districts did, and the amount is very similar to prior years. And the last slide really is just a sample of the resolution that will, for the general fund. Next slide, Joe. Basically, you're stating your expenditure number and that's all that's really contained in this. Resolution in addition to certifying that we prepared it on the state's form. And then it will be made available for public inspection. There's no other questions, I guess if we could.
And I have a question.
Discussion on rate increase.
Anne?
Yes.
I have a question on the slide where you showed what the increase would be in dollars. You know, the, the millage increase. So that was based on a property value of a hundred, that one, yeah. So that would be if your property was a hundred nine thousand. That would be your increase?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all. I just wanted to make sure that I had that right about that. So when you put it like that, I mean, it looks, no one wants an increase, but it does, you know. Doesn't look as bad as it sounds, I think. Thank you.
And it's my understanding that when, when we initially took this, the steps in the beginning when we were considering. The preliminary budget, I think we came to the conclusion that we would stay. Under the index, is that correct?
Right.
I mean, we weren't going to take the exceptions, which we didn't, so we can't now. You know, and the very, the very most we would be able to increase taxes would be. The, the three point three percent by Act One, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, I think it's, you know. This, this is where it becomes a little bit of a challenge because we have to really kind of, I think, select. A tax increase that is really going to address some of the areas that. You know, we know will, we know we're going to be, you know. Cutting into our, our fund balance regardless of, of what we select here. I mean, even if we choose. Three point three percent and my, my assumption is that we're still, that still doesn't cover, you know, the. The revenue shortfall that we anticipate based on our expenditures, is that correct?
The three point three percent, the deficit would be two point three million dollars.
So we would still have a deficit of two point three million dollars, which would then.
That, that does include my assumptions about a local revenue reduction. Obviously, it doesn't have the CARES funding. And how that's going to work yet.
But it does take into consideration all of the, all of the cuts and reductions that we had discussed.
It does.
You know, previous to this as well, okay. Does anyone have? Any thoughts?
Yeah. At the risk. I'll let other people go first.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, we're, we're. In an extraordinary time right now and I, I don't think. Because of the extraordinary nature of the situation, we're in, I do not think this is the year for us to raise taxes. I've said it before and I'm going to stick with it. I, I recognize. I, I see the numbers. I know what that means if we were to pass a budget with no tax increase, but. I, we simply cannot ignore the fact that. What are we up to? Thirty million people across the country have filed for. Financial assistance because been laid off, furloughed, lost their jobs, had their positions eliminated. I don't know what the, how that breaks down for Exeter Township, but we can't assume that the township has been. Is, is immune to that and I just, just wanted to take an opportunity to say that I, I still believe that very strongly.
Yeah, I, I think, I think part of the, the calculation that Anne did, I think, takes into consideration the fact that. Many of our folks in our residence, who are residents of the district, homeowners. May not be able to pay their property tax. I mean, I think Anne's calculations included a. You know, based upon prior history, you know, the fact that there were, there was not a, a one hundred percent. You know, level of, of receipt of our, of our tax revenue. So I think we're, we're recognizing, John, that, you know, there will be. Situations where folks will be likely unable to pay, not that we can condone that in any way, but. I mean, because, because it's a, a requirement for homeownership, but. You know, you're right. I mean, there will be some situations that will be extraordinary. I, I, on the other hand, you know, believe that we should be. Really concerned, you know, about, you know, all the loss of revenue. And that, you know, from my perspective, I would like to start with a two percent. You know, increase to, to really try to draw down, you know, close to a million dollars. In, in, in extra revenue this year to kind of offset. You know, what we anticipate, anticipate to be pretty significant loss in revenue this year. I mean, that's going to, that'll drive out nine hundred and twenty. Thousand dollars that I think is sort of critical to offset all of our losses and expenses. I'm concerned if we get to a point where, you know, and I know we, we lose fund balance, but we really have to start to eviscerate, eviscerate. Some of our programs and services going forward into next, in the following years. And I don't think that's what I'm hearing when I, when I'm, when we had our budget meetings, I, I didn't hear anybody clamoring. To say anything about tax increases. They said everything about maintaining and keeping. The programs and services that we already have. Everybody thought that what we provided was important. And there wasn't really much room for, for cutting or eliminating programs and services. So that's my, that's my suggestion. Anyway, I know everybody can weigh in, but I think, and all of us, I think should, but. That's where I, I come in on it.
Anne, how low can the fund balance go before you lose that double A credit rating and where it gets to be a, a problem for districts?
I, I can't say for sure. I, I believe if there were. Two or three years of deficit. And, you know, they are, they do look at the five year projection and if they don't see. Improvement or they see a continued draw on fund balance, then. You know, it will, it will go down. So maybe for two or three years, you'd be put on a, a watch. So it's hard for me to answer that with any. Assurance because. I don't sit around the table with, I mean, it's, it's a lot of people. Look at our, our data, our five year projections for both operations and capital, so.
Okay, that's helpful what you just said.
And, and, and just to, to clarify, I think S and P as well as Moody's, and I think there's a third major, major. Rating agency. I think that their formulas are proprietary, so we don't, we wouldn't know for certain. Exactly how they would look at it and I think a lot of it, not a lot of it, a portion of it is done on the judgment of the raiders at the time that are. Examining your, your entity. Is, is that correct?
They do have a tool that they use. I would have to. Talk with Jamie Schlesinger. About that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the third rating agency is Fitch. But when they do, do a.
But when they do, do a rating, and I just read some rating reports for Penn State Health and Tower Health, they will, you know, take into consideration adverse economic circumstances. So, so when they're looking at your rating, they'll assess those things over which you have control versus those things over which you don't have control. That doesn't mean that you'll necessarily stay where you are, but they will factor that in versus, you know, good management versus sort of, sort of poor management.
Yeah, I am a little curious on what the, the, the state can do in terms of involvement in, like, taking our money out of the, the fund balance, and, you know, making sure that, you know, that we can kind of square it up, in, you know, and, and, and in comparison to, you know, making sure our budget is up to date, you know, for, so we don't have to raise taxes to that level. I wonder, can a state kind of help us, you know, or maybe some kind of way to improve our ratings over a long period of time in, in that, in that process? Is there a way to do that, Anne? Is there, I'm wondering, is there something that may come up eventually? Do you predict anything like that, or, or do you know?
For the state to help? I think if they would increase funding, but again, they're having the challenges too, and this may go on for, I don't know how long it'll go on.
Yeah.
So are there any other, any other responses to Anne's question? Which really is, you know, we need to give her some direction, or at least a starting point for putting together a, a budget proposal for next Tuesday. So far, we've heard from two, two of us.
Does our administration have a recommendation for us?
When we talked about the, the beginnings of what the increase would be, we settled at the 2% range. Seeing that it would give us a little bit of money to help offset some of the losses. And that was before we had the increase in losses due to the certain pandemic. But 2%, I believe would give us a little bit of a support. Correct, Anne?
Correct. And I, I really understand everyone's position in terms of not impacting taxpayers under these, these circumstances. But then, business managers and, you know, administration are also concerned about, you know, that top property tax freeze and what it will, it will do to the future. So this is very difficult. Fortunately, there is fund balance that can be used under any of these scenarios. And again, you're not locking in at this point. I mean, but I think that you need more information, then maybe we just put it on display at the current rate, and then, once you're able to, as we get more information, I share more information, know what the state's going to do with the federal funding, then make a decision in June whether to have a modest tax increase. So, I mean, there's we're putting it on just display, but there is no commitment to that level.
Yeah, I, I think that we need to have some type of indication from the rest of the board this evening. I, I, I don't, if, if the board's decision is to move forward without an increase, I think that needs to be indicated so now, and I know that that final decision won't come until later. But I think there are serious ramifications of not doing an increase right now. And I, I really think that we need to understand those before setting up a more dramatic vote, if you will, for June. You know, I think what we're really trying to do here is make sure that we're governing the school district, and that's our number one obligation. And I know that several of you, including me, have pointed out that the school district of Exeter is, I think, the center of our community. It's really where most people congregate, and where most people flow and, and invest resources, and probably the primary reason that they chose to live in Exeter Township or St. Lawrence. And I think we really need to appreciate that our management and our governance of this entity, which is so precious, needs to continue in the good times and in the bad times, and we need to have a strategic focus on where we're going in the future. And I think that's some of the priorities that the board is trying to do with this budget, and, and trying to reduce our structural deficit for future years. And I, I think, you know, even, even considering that there are immense challenges that people are going through, and, and, you know, I understand that in my own household. I understand that in the households of many of the people I'm friendly with and in my family. And, and we hear several cases, whether it be via social media or email. So I think we're all aware of that. I think, looking at where we are going, and the amount of reductions that we've been able to attain this year, and what we'll have to do in the future as well, I think really merits having a small tax increase. And I, I would be supportive of going to about one and a quarter at this point. And I, I think that, you know, if, if there's a significant contingent of the board or a majority that doesn't want to see any increase, I think that we really need to consider that we're going to have to cut even deeper than, as we go forward. Our five-year projection, I think, is one of the things that Anne is relying on heavily, when she's discussing these issues, and I think that that's really key. Because while the prediction of the future is certainly not an exact science, and nobody could have predicted this, we clearly see from those costs that we know that our deficits are going to continue to increase primarily due to personnel costs. And if we don't start working on that immediately, then we are going to run out of fund balance very quickly. And if we run out of fund balance, that's where we get into a really dramatic situation. And I just don't think that that's going to happen. I don't think that the board has an appetite to let that happen. But I, I would just really encourage my colleagues, you know, let's not set this decision, harder decisions to be made up in the future. We have to make difficult decisions now, but, you know, we're having a lot of trouble working through a reduction of an hour in our, our regular instruction aids, in our reading aids, in the elimination of positions for library aides, a counselor at Riffin, and, and also attritioning positions. Could we imagine how difficult this would be if we start to really run out of fund balance and need to dramatically cut back on some of the programs that we really cherish, and we don't want to see challenged? And I think that's really the focus that we need to have going into the future, like Anne was saying, that planning component. And this is not easy for any of us to, to go one way or the other with cuts or increases, but that's just how I see it at this point. So I'll reiterate again. I, I would be supportive of a one and a quarter increase, so 1.25%, because I think that, that is, on average, where we've been. I think it's also maintaining our focus for the future, and making sure that we're funding the district. And I think it also makes commitments to the investments we've already made into our staff, into our facilities, and into the district as a whole. So those are, that's, those are my thoughts.
Anne, what were the effects on fund balance and credit rating for the two years of the last five that we had a 0% increase?
Well, there was no impact on credit rating. Because in those years, we were able to balance the budget or had some excess revenue over expense, and there's a number of reasons for that. Yeah, there's a lot of reasons for that.
During those years, Anne, would you say that the gap was closer to start than, like, the two to three million gap that we're at right now?
Less, yeah, less of a gap. Right now, we are, you know, I'd have to go back and look, but the gap is, the deficit is gradually each year growing. And our payroll, our wages and benefits are the areas that continue to go up. All the other non-payroll items are, pretty much are flat, and the projections are, are to keep those flat. It's really just trying to address wage and benefit cost increases.
I am actually in agreement with John at this point. Seeing where our community is right now, I, I just can't see asking for an increase in the tax. So that's where I stand.
Well, I, I know it's not popular what people want to hear, but I, I support a tax increase. Two years ago, we had a 0%, which, which sounded good, but then we were drawing down on the fund balance, and then last year was the half a percent. And so now we're here, where we kind of anticipated that they were going to need an, an increase, and, and what Anne just talked about shows that we, we do. So the slide that you have up right now, when I look at that, so on 100, if your property value is 110,000, that is a, we'll say you go with the 2% that Dr. Hamburger suggested, that would be $6, $6 a month. And everything goes up. I see people, you know, posting things about the water and sewer that they're saying it, you know, that it, that doubled. And so the cost of things go up, like, you know, salaries and utility bills, and everything that a district has to spend goes up every year. So it, you know, it, it's, I don't think we, any of us want to see a tax increase, but what are we going to do? We, you know what I mean? We have to balance the budget, and we can't just keep drawing down on the fund balance.
Yeah, I, I've said this before, but I know that, you know, the real, the real, the real pain that, that our taxpayers will experience is not the increase that we're going to impose. It's the, it's the basic property tax itself. You know, it's, even without an increase at all, that property tax is a challenge for a lot of our folks in our community. And, and I've said before, I mean, I think it's incumbent upon the state to start to, to find ways to generate more revenue, because they just haven't kept pace, you know, and they force school districts to continue to do the, the heavy lifting, you know, when it comes to generating, you know, the necessary revenues and balancing their budgets. And we've, every year, we go through this. Every year, we, we deny increases in requests for personnel. Every year, we ask our administrators to do more with less. And I, I, I get concerned about the, this, this, this gradual erosion of, of our ability to provide the kind of quality programs and services that we have come to know and appreciate. I'm also very concerned about Anne's projections for, you know, the, over the number of years to come, the loss of, of fund balance, where it's, we will exhaust it. At a certain point, we continue this deficit process where we don't replenish, you know, our, you know, our, our, our funds. We will, we will eventually run that down. And, and, and I think as Dr. Phillips has said before, any increase that we have is incremental, you know, in that it's an increase that carries forward, so it, it adds value to future years budgets. We're just, we're, we're painting ourselves, I think, into a, a pretty deep hole. And at some future point, with some future board, whether we're on the board or whether it's a one or two years from now, we're going to be facing an incredible tax increase or serious evisceration of our, of our programs and services. So that's, those are the reasons why I think regular and, and small incremental cost of living type increases make a lot of sense from my perspective. And when you look at what Dr. McLendon said, $6 a month, 19 cents a day for your average, you know, homeowner for an increase, to me, is, is, is realistic. Again, what is not necessarily realistic is, you know, the, the total, you know, tax that they have to pay, which again, is, is the, is really, I believe, the fault of our legislature.
Um, oh goodness. I want to say no tax increase, because I would like to support that, but I agree with Dave's comment earlier that, you know, the, the majority of the parents, the people that I know, they value what we as a district provide to their children. And, you know, so when I talk to my friends, you know, the people that have kids in the district, they want a good district. They want good teachers. They want good programs, and this is important to them. So as much as I want to say no increase, because I really feel for the people that are not working right now, or even before all this, didn't have the money, I feel like it would be smart for our future to have a slight increase. But with that being said, I said it earlier, I, I do not support cutting the reading aids, even the one hour. I do not support that. So as long as that is in there, I'm not approving anything.
I'm, I'm a little bit torn on this one. I really do think that, you know, I think by us not adjusting things in the past and keeping things status quo, we're paying for these adjustments now. And I think that's part of the reason that I, I, I am against it, because of the things that we're going to now, but I, I agree with, with, you know, Dave on this one in particular, because we are in a situation that is, of course, unique, but we're also very fortunate that we have, our kids are still being educated right now. They're still being taught. There's other school districts like Reading and other, you know, city schools and things like that, that these kids are not going to school every day. They're not being educated. Ours are still continuing to be schooled, you know, being educated, and they, they're our kids, our teachers have adjusted to this situation, and it may continue for next year. So our tax money is going towards a purpose of something that's still going on to this day. So in that light, I, I think that, you know, we have to do something, or else we're going to keep on taking money out of our fund balance. We'll never have it anymore. And if school district wants to stay at a status quo, if people want the things that they have now and still have them continue, and if we don't do something, we're, we're going to stay, we're, we're going to be in a situation where we're going to be basically kind of, you know, shot in the dark here. So I, I, I'm against it, but I, if I have to, I would think, you know, that we'd have to do this, because we don't have, really have much, much of a choice. That's my point.
Well, and I know, there's also, I, I know Hunter had mentioned it too, but that some proposed cuts for the next, the following school, not next school year, but the 21, 22, I guess. I think we really do have to, to look at that, like, looking at class sizes and looking, you know, like, that whether it's small classes or electives, I think we are going to have to look at that in, in the future of things that don't really impact the education. the education or has, have the least impact on education. So I'm, I'm in favor of like a, an increase this year, but also really looking very closely at anything that might, you know, be able to, you know, like we're going to look at those, at the class sizes and things like that for the following school year. So I think that we really have to do that.
I agree with you, Sharon. I think, you know, all of this, I think, all of this is essential in looking forward for a new plan for our school district and making sure that we maintain the services that our children are making even better services for our children. Cause that is what we would all like. I attended the budget meetings this year and the, the town hall type budget meetings that we had and, and the town hall last week. And I agree with what Dave said was people were asking for services to remain. I have had two, two people reach out to me to say, please don't, you know, don't raise taxes. Or one was at one of those meetings and one was in an email format. But I've had so, so many reach out to me asking to maintain our current services. So for that reason, I would be in favor of a small tax increase.
So Allison, the people that you're referring to that do not want to see any services and a, a cut, were they okay with a, a tax increase to support that?
Um, yes, it seemed to me that they would say, I, you know, I would like these services, please, you know, and I'm willing to pay for them. But I mean, I, I do feel greatly for the people in our district right now who can't. Or, you know, have lost their job or, and this, this is a struggle. But, you know, we want to maintain the education of our students. So, you know, it's a decision we have to make.
I mean, based upon what folks have said so far, could we, could we consider a 1.5? Can we have, can we have a conversation about a 1.5% increase?
Could we put up the slide?
Sixteen. So you'd be looking at probably a 3.1 million dollar deficit.
So then that would probably put us like at a maybe 5.7 or 5.8 unassigned. Sorry, that's in my way. I can't see it, read it.
The unassigned would be about 4.4 million and so 5.5%.
And just a quick question, have we ever been that low with our unassigned fund balance at 5.5%? It did, maybe that's an unfair question to ask. You probably don't have that at your fingertips, but I mean, does that sound like an extraordinary low figure for you?
I'm not extraordinary low, no. I think we've had scenarios before. I'd have to look at what our original budget or 1920 was adopted at. Stay with me. But the fund balance policy years ago did reflect a minimum of 5%.
I would just like to say to people out there watching this. I think that myself and other board members have brought up the topic of all different kinds of cuts to make. And you know, we've been told, number one, that's not our job to make those recommendations. And number two, that they're not allowed by the school code. So I know a lot of people constantly say, you should cut this or you should cut that. We really can't unfortunately cut a lot of the ideas that people present to us. So.
Well, I think, I think one of the challenges too, is that each one of us board members is not a full-time administrator with a background to be able to make these types of decisions. And I know some people here are more familiar with the education decisions that we are making than others, certainly than me. But I, I do a little bit of, not to the degree or to the intensity that Ann does, but I at work have to struggle through some of these decisions too. And this is not an easy process. And it's very easy to just start pointing to things and say, well, we don't need that or we don't need this. And there, there is some merit to that. It's, it's a, it's a decision that, that you're making as a policy. But this is an extremely challenging process. And, and you know, it, it is, it is very, very difficult to look through a budget and try and understand what you can take out without really harming things. And we're trying to be careful and really measured in our approach to this. And it is, it is very challenging. And, and we as board members, I think, need to rely on our administrators from the top down and from the bottom up for their guidance through this process, because we, we don't have the ability to go into the building full time and look through this. And if we really wanted to take ownership of this budget in a way to say, I personally can bet and say to you, I looked through everything, then you're basically a full-time staff person at this time. And that's not our job. Our job is to govern and leave administration to the managers of the district. And that's who we have appointed here. And, you know, from my perspective as the, the chair of business functions with our administrators, I, I've been working with them this whole semester in detailed conversations, basically every other day. Sometimes for much longer than they want to be on the phone with me for. And, and this has really been a process that we've exhausted ourselves through. And on top of that, they can only do so much as the board directs them to. It, it's not immediately clear how many of us have really indicated to them what our desired level of reductions is going to be throughout the year. And, and we're going to try and hammer that out more as we go forward. But this is a process that we need to be engaged with to indicate our desires too.
And to add on to that, and I'll add on to what Allison is saying is we have, when people, you know, like send those comments of like, well, why did you use this money for this? And why didn't you put, you know, save money by doing this? Understand that these are all different buckets of money. And we can't put this money that's in this bucket into another bucket necessarily all the time. There's only certain money that we could put into certain buckets. And I think sometimes the people have a misunderstanding that all of this is just one big cash flow of money that you can use and spend and put back into one or the other and cash this in to cash that out. It doesn't work that way. It works in where money's used for in certain checking accounts, like you have a husband and wife checking account. You don't put your money with somebody else's. You can't make up someone else's cash. So to, to pay for other things. So that's the other understanding of this. When we look at these budgets, it's not just one of these things where you could just say, oh, well, why don't you just transfer this money over to this? Cause there's a surplus in this and a, you know, and a, and a, a lot, you know, loss or gain in other accounts. Doesn't work that way. So I think we need to have that understanding when, when people ask those questions of, why did you spend this money on this? Well, that money was already was, you know, reserved for that and we can't use that money for anything else. And I think that's one of the understandings that we have to get. And so it is a challenge. It's something that Ann, I give a hundred percent credit for, for keeping track of all these different buckets of money and how they're ran. But it's a very, very hard thing to, to keep track of. And also understand that you, when you, we do have money, it's not necessarily, you can use it for these things or the other. Not all the monies in, in, in that area can, like, is, is that correct, Hunter? Can you, can you?
Yeah, I, I totally agree. And, and I, I don't think that either what we're saying is to community members or to even staff to not check out what we're doing, because that, that's necessary. It's an expectation. And we want to hear your ideas as we go forward and, and we are trying to measure what we are ultimately doing against what the community would like from us. But the realities of these circumstances just tie our hands in ways that I don't think people understand or anticipate. And we need to probably do a better job of communicating that to members of the public. And, you know, I think that that's definitely a growth area as we go forward, especially in regards to what Hiri was talking about with the different fund balances that we have and how we have a capital equipment fund or sorry, a a capital reserve fund. And then we have these different areas for our assignments or our commitments and our unassigned fund balance. And that's something that we probably have to do a better job of explaining to our community as we move forward.
So I think one of the things that this community has done through the years, if you look at both our bond rating and our fund balance is to put and to have a strong belief in the educational system in Exeter. And that there's a lot of pride in the fact that we have a solid bond rating and that we have the fund balance that we do. As basically people making an investment in the children of this community. And I think they're proud of that. And while I realize that sometimes right now, particularly we have some challenges because we're both faced with both a structural deficit and a cyclical deficit being what we're going through right now. You know, it does sort of compound the problem. But I would ask people to step back and if they can't think about the kids in this district, then perhaps be a little bit more selfish and think about the value of their home. Because if we don't invest in the Exeter School District, you're in effect not investing in the value of your home. And if the school district develops a reputation because we decide to erode the curriculum and the amended, the, 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 the programs that we offer to our kids, you are in effect going to have, you're going to reduce the value of your home when you decide to put it on the market. And I hate to reduce it to dollars and cents, but a lot of people do want to reduce it to dollars and cents. And I think that the, the smart thing to do for those of us who are elected is to bite the bullet and say that we're going to look long-term on this. I think that the Business Functions Committee has done an awful lot of work in working with the administration and with the rest of the board. And I, and I think the board has been engaged. Some may not have been as publicly vocal as others, but I think they're all engaged. And I do think that there is a plan in place to go after both the structural deficit. And on top of that, we're dealing with our cyclical challenges right now. But this community is very proud of this school district. And yes, there is a very, very vocal minority. And we all hear them. But we have a community of 30,000 people who have a lot of pride in where they live and a pride in their future. And I'm pretty sure that they don't want to see us diminish that.
That's well said, Mike. I mean, I think if I can interpret Mike's comments, you know, I think he's, sounds like that, you know, he's recognizing that we do have to do what we can to, to shore up our finances here.
That's what I said.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to my prior suggestion of, and and ask the board to entertain a 1.5% increase as a as a, as a starting point for next Tuesday and allow Ann to, to put that into her budget documents and, and let the numbers reflect from there. Is there any, is there any? I know we'll have some objections to that, but I mean, or is there anyone who would? And I know not everybody believes that. I mean, everybody does, there, there are still folks who are firmly convinced that we should not have an increase. And I am one who believes we should have more of an increase. And I agree with the administration at a certain level. But, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that we can find this middle ground, so to speak. And I think it does represent a kind of a compromise. At least from my way of thinking and from what the administration has proposed to us. So unless there are any objections, I'd like to move forward with that. Okay. All right. And thank you for your presentation today, you know, and, and I want to thank all the board members too, for your patience and your, your willingness to, to think through this. And I know this, I mean, this is a struggle. It's really not easy. And thanks for all the consideration and thought that you give to all of your opinions. It really makes, it, I mean, it really shows that we care. Can I, Ann, are you done your, your presentation?
Done.
Okay. Can we move on in the budget or into the agenda then? All right. So well, we're up to the minutes for next week. We have two sets of minutes. One is the workshop and one's the voting minutes. And then we're into policies and I'm not going to try to, I'm not going to belabor this, I, considering the hour. But we do have several policies up through H that reflect second reading. The only one I'd like to comment on in those is something that Ann brought up very early on, and we really haven't done anything about. And that has to do with, I think relations with parent organizations. And that's policy 915. And I, and Ann asked me about this again today in hearing and, and I said, you know, we, I really want to, she proposed some, some change in, in language. So what I'd like the board to at least be willing to agree to is that, you know, we'll, we'll make some minor changes in language this week. I'll work with Ann and we'll include that in there and that'll, that'll be, it's a minor editing. It doesn't make a substantial change in the, in the policy. So I don't think it should really go back to first reading. And if folks are okay with that, you'll see that on the agenda, those changes on the agenda for when it comes out on Friday. The other, the other policies, you know, that are for first reading, there's a significant new policy. It's title one, you know, parent and family engagement. And I know I spoke to, to Patrick on this. And there's a lot of work that really needs to be done on, on that policy. It's, it's pretty involved. It requires a lot of obligations on a part of the school district. And Patrick, I know you're going to, you know, this is a starting point, but you have, you have more work to do on that as far as I understand.
Correct. Myself and, and Mrs. Devlin will be sitting down together and going through that and making sure it's, it's up to date and edited accordingly.
Okay. I'm just going to summarize some of the changes in the other policies. Policies here is there are four, which is membership. The only thing they changed there is you all know, there's a new school direct, there's a new school training, there's a new training obligation for new school directors. Five hours when a person is first newly elected to the board. And there are certain specific areas that are included in this policy that need to be addressed through that training. And then for reappointed or reelected board members, there's a three-hour instructional requirement. And this past year, we all went through that, but this particular section of the policy has to, has to reflect those changes. Policy 006, which is meetings, was updated to reflect some new provisions in the executive session, section. some new provisions in the executive session, section. Um, and there was a new section added, uh, to the policy regarding, uh, abstention from voting and clarification about what is a, a conflict of, of interest. Policy Zero Zero Six Point One, Electronic Communications. This is, uh, directly impacted by the, uh, COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, and it reflects the, uh, potential impact of extenuating circumstances such as health and safety emergency in a school community or, or anything like that, that would require a board to conduct, uh, meetings, uh, by virtual means for all members and not just based on the prior provision, uh, which suggested that a, a single board member would be able to participate online due, due to their, um, uh, due to their absence from the meeting. Policy Two Oh One Admissions to Students, uh, this, um, is, this policy has been streamlined by PSBA. Um, but, but it also is, it's, it's a policy that we need to adapt or change based on the fact that we will not be able to see kids in school, uh, and actually do any assessments for early admission to school. Uh, this is, this is the primary policy that regulates early admission to school for kids in first grade and kindergarten. So if you're let's say coming to first grade and you're less than six years old and you want to come to school, there's normal process that you go through evaluation by a psychologist and a recommendation, uh, by the superintendent and approval by the school board. Um, you know, those situations also apply for kindergarten as well. But by not being able to actually assess kids right now because of the, uh, the pandemic, uh, there has to be some change to this policy, um, as well as general updates relative to what PSBA is recommending. And I know Bob, you're working with, uh, Dawn Harris and the special ed supervisors and, and kind of revising this policy. So we'll see more changes in this policy probably by Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, child abuse, finally, the last one, eight oh six. Um, this really had some updates with some minor revisions, um, based on some recent changes in state and federal law. Um, also some language added to address Trafficking Victims Protection Act, which was part of the federal, uh, law. New language was added, um, where we have to display a poster um, in the schools with a statewide toll-free phone number for reporting suspected abuse. We have to do more to making the information about reporting suspected child abuse available to, to students and staff. Um, and there's also new language in this that has to do with employees who might be assisting individuals who are known or suspected child abusers, uh, to be able to get jobs. Um, and this is sometimes we refer this in the vernacular is pass the trash. Um, but this is where, uh, we have to make sure that we have a, we have a, uh, uh, an obligation to make sure that if we know somebody in our district who was dismissed due to sexual harassment, that we notify a potential employer. Um, so those are the, you know, those are the, um, the ones that are, are new for this, um, for Tuesday. Uh, if there are any questions?
Yeah, I have one, Dave.
Sure, John.
I didn't see anything in that policy and it might be in another one about mandated reporting requirements. Uh, is it covered? Is that, should that be covered here or is it covered somewhere else?
Eight oh six, I think should cover it unless there's another child abuse policy as part of our professional employee section of the policy. The, uh, what is that? The three hundred section of our policy. But, uh, I think you're-
Something in there, Dave.
You think there is?
I'm pretty sure, yes.
You mean in the eight oh six section or in the, uh?
I think the, uh, the, um, the three hundreds.
The three hundred section.
Yeah, I can go back and double check, but I know I, because I remember reviewing it. I know it's somewhere else.
Yeah. Remember that policies in the eight hundred section have to do with community. So, um, this may be less. This may have less to do with our, our employees reporting abuse and then it has to do with some general provisions relative to notification of, of folks about their obligation uh, or about their, their requirement to report. Right. But that, that's good that you brought that up, John. I think it's, we should identify where that is because I know it's in here somewhere.
Okay. Well, I think we should, we should know exactly where it is. And I know Mark Rosy, um, has, there were changes that he pushed for that were part of some recent legislation. And so I want to make sure also that wherever the mandated reporting requirements are in our policies, that they include the changes that, uh, Mark helped bring about.
Yeah. Maybe Christine, if you could, uh, take a look into that at some point and, uh, you know, get, get back to the board and, and let us know where, you know, where we can find that mandated reporting provision because it is, it is important to make sure that we have it in here.
I, I know I saw it and I, I will. I'll, I'll definitely let you know where, exactly where it's at.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a comment about the bullying policy. Uh, it's not about the language that's in there, but it mentions training for, uh, staff and for students. And I know that their programs, the bullying programs for, for students, what kind of training do the teachers get in, you know, recognizing and knowing what to do about the bullying situations?
I'm assuming that.
I thought, um, didn't Sue Miller have something, um, some type of training about that, uh, Bob?
We had the trauma-informed training, but then they do go through a whole, uh, the online trainings as well.
Yes.
There's online, online, uh, bullying training for staff?
There's a, there's a huge list of trainings that the staff must go through.
Yeah.
Um, we can look at that information and get that to you. Christine can-
Yeah. Okay. I just was on it because I saw that it is listed in the policy that training should be provided for the teachers for staff as well as the students.
Okay. I'll look into that, um, along with the educator misconduct as well. Sure.
Any other questions about policies? Okay. All right. We're, we'll move on to the next section of our agenda, which is business functions, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Aaron's.
I'll try and brief, brief. Thank you, uh, Dr. Hamburger. Um, there are several items that are going to be voted on next year, um, a few of them, uh, that we do, um, I believe annually, which is the appointment of the solicitor and the appointment of the treasurer. There are also, um, some contracts in there as well as budget transfers. But real quick, I do want to quickly focus on, um, the, uh, budget. Um, and before, before I say that, I do want to follow up, um, quick. I, I think that probably next week we should have, you know, this might be a bad idea, but that we should have a discussion about what the implication of extending the, um, lunch program will be for the rest of the year as, as Bob, um, or as Dr. Phillips alluded to earlier and as Ann alluded to earlier in the meeting, um, to try and understand the implications of that. And maybe that would be better for the June workshop. I'm not sure. Um, but I, I think that we need to have that conversation sooner rather than later. Um, the, the other thing that I saw here, um, from our, our initial public comment this evening, I think it's important for me to say, and I, I don't think this was said when we were hearing it, um, about the, the track specifically, but capital projects in general. We're going to continue to review all of our capital projects as we go forward. Um, and you, you saw that reflected as well in some of our smaller projects that we have slated for next year. Um, and I, I just wanted to make sure I, I touched on that. Um, in terms of the budget vote for next week, we've heard, um, from several board members, I think thus far that there are some concerns about specific cuts or line items in the budget. Um, and, uh, you and I were communicating earlier today um, about a way to try and handle that so that it's, um, done in a, in orderly fashion. Um, and that will allow for discussion to really be had around those and make sure that that discussion, um, is informed. And I just want to reiterate what I believe that process was going to be. And then if you have any disagreements with that, let me know, Ann. Um, but this way, everybody knows how to go about, um, any changes that they want to see to any of these budget reductions. So I think what had been last discussed and, um, I'm not sure if you got a chance to respond, Ann, but was that we would have any board member who wants to see a change to the budget, um, email you and ask for it to be costed out. And then ahead of the budget, um, vote that we would have next week, that those costs would be listed out per amendment on an Excel sheet or something to that effect, so that we all know what the implication of those costs are. And that we have an idea about needing to think about that ahead of time. Um, and then what would happen, we would just operate under Robert's Rules of Order with, is a member wants to make an amendment to include or exclude a position or a line item or something along those lines. After the initial motion is made, they'll just say, I'd like to make an amendment to the budget. It would need a second and then it can be discussed and then it needs to be voted on. This way, we're not going through each, um, individual line item in the budget reduction plan. Um, and this way, we also don't need to try and make issues out of things that aren't issues. Um, so that if, if there's somebody that feels strongly about a specific, um, budget line item being taken out of, uh, the budget or being put back into it, um, we can get an idea of what that looks like ahead of time. So we, we can come to the meeting next week and understand what that cost implication is. Um, so I'll, I'll leave it at that and see if there's any feedback for that proposal or suggestion.
Hunter, I, I would have to agree. I, I can't think of any other way that we can address, you know, some of those um, discrepancies in our, in our, in our opinions unless we have a chance to actually maybe you know, put some of these to, you know, through the test of, you know, a vote at some point. Um, whether it's, you know, reduction in the, uh, aid staff or uh, reduction of a teaching position or anything else that somebody might be inclined to object to. Um, from their perspective, I think everybody needs to at least, um, those proposals, I think, need to be vetted and, um, determine whether or not there's, you know, majority board support. And like anything else, I mean, I, you know, if we have sufficient votes to the, in the majority, then, then we would make that amendment to the proposed budget.
Yeah. And, and it's also, this is not to suggest that any board member can make an amendment to the budget without notifying Ann ahead of time. The, the reason I'm suggesting it this way is so that when we get to the meeting itself, um, and somebody asks the inevitable question of what is that impact? Uh, we don't have to scramble or try and force Ann to run calculations on that while we're sitting here. That can be done ahead of time. So we know exactly what the cost is. We don't have to worry about making a decision without knowing that number. So this is just to make it an orderly process. Again, that's not to disenfranchise anybody's ability to make an amendment on the budget, um, and, and to do so only on the nineteenth. This is just a way to make it more orderly.
Um, along those lines, um, so that we don't blindside you, Ann, I'm, I'm, this is directed at you. Is there a way to identify now items for possible consideration that would have an amount similar to the amounts that we've identified and that about which some people are concerned? In other words, let's say we take a vote and one of those items is, uh, shot down. Would, would you be able to identify other parts of the budget that could be cut? Or we could recover that savings, uh, if we decide to eliminate one of those categories from consideration?
I'd have to work on that.
I'm just thinking it might, it might be, it might do well for us to have some things in our hip pocket. Uh, and I'm, I'm, uh, I'm grateful for what Hunter said. We don't want to blindside you next Tuesday and say, okay, go look for something else that's worth a hundred thousand dollars, but there might be some other, uh, candidates for cutting that we would have to consider if some of these, one or more of these items is, um, uh, is, is shot down. So it's just a sort of thinking out loud here uh, a week before we do it rather than bringing it up out of the blue next Tuesday.
Well, it also could continue through June.
Oh, that's true. Yes. Okay. Yes. All right. All right. Well, then I, I would make that suggestion that, that, uh, administration perhaps take another look at some other items. Identify the ones that we know people are concerned about, those dollar amounts, and see if we can come up with similar dollar amounts in, in other areas. So that's my two cents.
Hunter, are you done your, um, business functions section?
Yep. I'm good. Oh, you know what? One, one thing I, in, in my comments earlier, I did not mean to suggest, and then just in reflection, I think I kind of jumped close to the line here. I did not mean to suggest that board members are being inattentive to this process, um, in terms of the budget reduction. Um, and if I, if I suggested that in any way to, to any of you, I apologize. Um, that was not my intention. I think what I'm really trying to address here is that it's, it's difficult for, I think, the Business Functions Committee to kind of reach out in one direction and try and represent where we think a majority of the board is. And, and it's just, it's, it's challenging to, to do that safely. And we, we want to make sure that we're representing, I think, what the majority of opinion is. And that's what I was trying to suggest. So I, I apologize if there was confusion in that. It was not my intention to suggest that we weren't being attentive to this process.
Thanks, Hunter.
I'm good now.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Personnel Committee, uh, Mrs. Wilson.
Um, yes, next week we are going to be voting on the retirement of Karen Greb. Um, three appointments of certificated staff. Um, one long-term substitute, uh, Todd Pabbage at Jacksonwald, and then two special education learning. Uh, one learning support teacher at a Watten and one multi-disabled long-term substitute at a Watten. We will be voting on course requests and also one staff conference.
Any questions about personnel? Okay. Thanks, Mrs. Wilson. Um, Student Functions, Mrs. Stratton.
Next week we'll be voting on, uh, one field trip for next year. That is beyond sixty mile reading as well as an agreement with Kids Peace and an extended school year contract, uh, agreement with New Story.
Any questions on those? Okay, we'll move on. Thanks. Thanks, Mrs. Stratton. Curriculum Programs Curriculum Committee, Dr. McLendon.
Okay. Next week we'll be voting to approve an agreement with the Reading Area Community College uh, to continue to offer dual enrollment for the twenty twenty-one school year, uh, for our high school, uh, students. The tuition rate is ninety-nine dollars per credit and that is, that costs is responsibility of the students. And there is an attachment that it, uh, has details all the information about the agreement.
That was reviewed during the curriculum committee. Thanks, Dr. McLendon. Facilities Committee, Mr. Fidler.
Mr. Fidler, you're muted.
Facilities, Mr., uh, you, you with us, John?
Yeah, I don't know how that happened. I didn't touch the, uh, thing. Um, that it's, it's a non-essential item. Uh, the PASBO proposal would, would cost, uh, in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars. And I think as long as we're looking at spending our money as carefully as we can, I'm going to, uh, suggest now and again on Tuesday that we, uh, simply table that item uh, for a future, for future consideration. Um, the other, uh, or the AEM Architects, I'm still reviewing. We got some communication from AEM. It would be, uh, an addendum, uh, to the existing contract for the Transportation Center. And, um, after consulting with, uh, Mrs. Guidish, uh, found out that it would not delay matters- found out that it would not delay matters to table this item until the June meeting, by which time I will have had a chance to read in more detail, uh, the communication from AEM and have a more complete, complete report and will take action in June. So that's basically my report.
So, uh, you know, I think we could probably just take them off the agenda, uh, since we're not ready and just plan to reconsider them at future times if necessary, based on your, based on the facilities committee's recommendations at that time.
Okay. Sounds good. All right.
All right. Um, yeah. And the other thing too, if we could, I mean, as we're looking at the, um, the addendum proposal to our current contract with AEM, I'd like to see the, the current contract as well. Because it's kind of hard to read this document, this proposal without actually seeing the existing contract.
Yes. Um, I, I have a copy. Um, I think it was in Ann's note. Um, and I think the board should have both documents too, so we can all consider, uh, consider material as a, as a new entity that we would make any decisions on.
Yeah. Sorry if it was already sent out. I apologize. I-
Well, I, I, I got it. I don't know if the rest of the board got it. Uh, and I don't even know if you got it, Dave, but, uh, okay. I, I agree with you. I think everybody ought to have both documents.
Yeah. Okay. Are any, any questions or any discussion regarding facilities committee, uh, items? Okay. Uh, are there any other issues that, uh, folks would like to bring up at this time before we adjourn?
Dave, uh, may I, um, ask Ann hearing, and if you guys have done this in, in past meetings that I missed, to talk about this amazing program of Adopt a Senior? I think this sort of plays to the issue that I spoke about earlier about the, uh, community's commitment to our children and to our school district. So, um, and can, can you, if you guys have done this before, I'll, I'll, we can end it here. Could you talk about that program?
Sure. I mentioned it quick last week, um, the week prior, I don't remember. But, um, basically a Facebook page was created by three moms in our community. And I'd like to say they are not senior moms. They have younger kids, I believe in the community, but they decided to take this upon themselves to create a page, um, where seniors can be posted with a brief information about themselves and some pictures. And then community members can then say they would like to adopt them. And in adopting them, they basically just make them feel special for the next couple of months. Since they're going to be missing, uh, not having a graduation, um, not having prom. This is a way of just recognizing them and letting them know that the community, um, appreciates them, whether it be a small gift or every week sending them a pizza or just notes. And, um, you can find that page on Facebook. I don't remember the exact name of it right now. Maybe Allison remembers it, but, um,
I think it's Adopt a Senior.
Just put in Exeter 2020 or something like that.
Yeah. They had a lot of publicity this week between, um, 69 News and Y102. And also Mr. Campbell sent out a second reminder to the seniors. And I do believe she told me today that they had a huge influx of more seniors. So we're getting there. I believe last week we had 150 of our three fif, 150 seniors sign up. So I think she had more people involved in that today. So I'm hoping the numbers have increased. So we're getting there.
Yes. It's Exeter School District, Exeter, PA, Adopt a 2020 Exeter graduate.
Thank you, Allison.
And I know they said over half of the seniors have been adopted.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, my daughter, who is a senior, she got her gift. Uh, matter of fact, they dropped off some cupcakes. Uh, there was like a big care package that she got so far. So she's loving it, you know, it's a, you know, it's kind of sad that she didn't have her prom this weekend and things like that. It would have been this weekend. So, but you know, other than that, you know, she, they, this is something that kind of cheered these kids up on, you know, some, such an unprecedented time right now. So, but, uh, it's, you know, I, I think it was a great idea. It's a wonderful idea. And I'm glad they, they're getting such popularity from it. I think every, you know, if there's any other unadopted, uh, seniors, I guess, let me know. I'll be glad to, uh, to contribute in the case.
Well, what I, what I'd love to say is that literally the second a senior's photo and bio is posted, they're adopted. There, there doesn't seem to, there are two people in the community that are disappointed that they can't adopt someone as it's happening so quickly. So our community's coming together in a way that's just, um, uh, businesses in our community that are giving discounts for gifts for these seniors. So everyone's coming together and it's a beautiful thing. I'm proud of it.
Yeah. I actually, I adopted two seniors and now I feel badly because they're like putting a limit. You can only adopt one. There's more people that want to adopt than there are seniors to adopt. So that's a really great, um, thing for our community.
Thanks, guys. Any other, any other comments from board members? You know, I forgot to ask, uh, Joe Wade, Joe Calamita, did we receive any additional community or public comments before we adjourn tonight? If you guys are with us.
Yeah, we are. We have not received any more questions.
Okay. Okay. Well, unless there are other, uh, any other comments from board members, I think we're good to adjourn this, uh, this evening. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday night. I think there's a business functions committee that precedes, um, that meeting and, uh, hope folks can make that. And then we'll see everybody else at seven o'clock next Tuesday. So thanks, everybody. Have a great-
I'd like to thank, uh, Joe and Joe for their work in pulling these meetings off. And I know that Joe Way also assisted us with an issue around AP, um, access for students. He clarified some stuff over the weekend, uh, through the use of technology, which I think, uh, relieved a lot of anxiety of our students. So thank you.
Yep.
I would agree. You guys have been indispensable. Thank you.
Thank you. We're here to help.
Okay. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.